All right, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion, same type as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. We have bills, employee status changes, overtime, and September financial report. Does anybody want anything called?
Motion to put the consent agenda through.
Okay, is there's, okay, there's a second. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is public health. Ms. Johnson, you're here to give us a COVID-19 update.
I just sent out our health officer's dashboard and update for today to the commission members, and it's also on the screen. And I'm going to focus on the next slide, pretty much exclusively today, and then answering questions that you might have. So there, the usual data is included there in all cases, and so on and so forth, but I just want to highlight the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that we have for Grand Forks County. So under strengths, our cases have leveled off in recent weeks at forty to fifty cases per one hundred thousand per day. There hasn't been any progression to widespread outbreak levels, so that's a positive sign. We've been watching for those. There have been a number of large events, sporting events, and various things like that. And we do know that we have cases in a number of counties in Grand Forks. It's not just concentrated within the city, or, excuse me, a number of communities within the county. It's not just within the city of Grand Forks. And we're starting to increase our vaccinations for boosters. You may have read in the news that the FDA is now considering boosters for the Johnson &amp; Johnson and Moderna, as well as the Pfizer vaccine. We have been giving Pfizer boosters for a few weeks now. So we anticipate some final approval of that in the next week, as well as pediatric Pfizer vaccine, which we are anticipating sometime in early November. We're getting really close to our fifty percent of the county fully vaccinated. That's fifty percent of all vaccine eligible, but fifty percent of all county residents. And we still have a way to go before we're at that fully protected phase. The weaknesses, though, are we are still seeing high case incidents in all age groups. It's not just limited to one age group. It's across the whole age spans. And hospitalizations are higher than last year, despite the lower case rate. And so what we're seeing is just kind of bouncing around between twelve and nineteen cases at all true. That, of course, is regional, so it's not just Grand Forks County cases. And then we did have some deaths reported from last week to this week. Opportunities are that the CDC recommends masking indoors, which helps further prevent the spread. And then, as previously mentioned, the opportunities for boosters. We are starting to see a decrease in case rates in early and northern counties, which is a good sign. They've been a little bit of the hot spot for the state, and there's a lot of trouble between our communities and North Dakota. And then, of course, we don't really know what's going to happen in the future. If you remember, this time last year, we were starting to see significant increases. We peaked at the end of November. That was a very stressful time, and we certainly don't want to see that repeated. That was, however, during a time when we didn't have vaccinations. We're starting to see some people test positive after being fully vaccinated, so we hope that those boosters will really help keep that down. But what we are seeing is that people are having much milder diseases, so that's a good thing. And I'll be happy to answer any questions from the commission if you have any.
Anybody have any questions? None? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, members of the commission.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is PFAS litigation. We have Nepali Shkolnik at law firm, and with us is Chris Lap, Chris Lap, Sonia's daughter, and Hank Notton. Welcome to, please take the podium. And Chris, welcome back to North Dakota. Sorry, Hank. Welcome to North Dakota.
I've already been to the red pepper, I mean.
Oh, well, that.
I dragged him there, it's covered.
Well, it, I'm, hopefully it was good experience.
Oh, no. I don't know much about cardiology, just like.
That's when me and Chris had a heart attack on a plate.
Commissioners, chairwoman, thank you for having us today. We are going to be talking to you about a matter that we're involved in called involving PFAS. With me is my colleague Hank Notton. He is managing partner of this case and for the PFAS cost recovery. And he has a resume that's very impressive. He spent thirty years with the representative in the Massachusetts Legislature. And he, while he was in the legislature, water quality purity was one of his top agenda items, so he's very familiar with this topic. He also served twenty years in the Army Reserve and National, Army Reserve National Guard, and did tours in Iraq, Afghanistan, Syria, although we were talking about it this morning. He's been basically everywhere. And he's also a former prosecutor for, for home court prosecutors. And my name is Christian Black, for those of you who don't know me. I work along with them on the litigation and to give your presentation. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Hank.
Thank you. And I do feel like, almost like a, I've only been to twenty-four hours, but really, I always do, almost feel like a local, over hour, Chris, with the red pepper, showed me all the sights, the river, the flood, came in. I, when I talk to boards like this and talk to people involved in PPW and the water, I almost feel like I'm at the dinner table growing up. My father ran the water department in my hometown back in central Massachusetts for forty years, so. But when I went into the house, it's the primary water source for all of eastern Massachusetts, including the city of Boston. So when the cockpies issue, I feel like I'm back home at the supper table growing up. Now, I'm always careful, because I know there's some significant legal talent on this board, as well as the great other resources that you have. So I always have to be careful about how far on the limb I go and the things I say and promises I make. But we're proud to be here. We've been working, as many of you may likely know. The issue of PFAS is more and more and more in the media, up until yesterday even, when the Biden administration announced, or Administrator Reagan from EPA announced that within the next three years, a MCL, a maximum contaminant level, will be, probably for the entire country, the entire country, all. And that's a moving target. A couple of years ago, right now it's at seventy parts per trillion. And I was getting to, I was trying to try to get a little bit of a baseline on how much investigation, how much knowledge, because sometimes I go to some places, I go all around the country talking to water authorities or boards that are charged with the water authority. Sometimes the knowledge of PFAS is a lot, sometimes it's not. But I think because of the way the media's been lately, it's been really rising up on everybody's radar screen, and in places such as Grand Forks, where you've got an airbase, you've got a part training system, you've got center, you've got the aviation training academy, the airport. I'd be stunned if there was not some level of impact here. And I know that the level of testing is low or hasn't really started yet here in North Dakota, or specifically in Grand Forks. But I can tell you a little bit about what we've been doing over the past couple of years. So I just want to go to the next slide, a little bit of the history of our firm. And I say none of this, and as I said, I'm always, talking about the lawyers, I'm always careful. But the firm's been around about thirty years. And I say none of this in any way to brag about it. So I am very, very proud. When I left the house to become a partner of this firm, it almost felt like I was moving on to another organization, public service boards. There's these types of litigation that the firms have involved. This one, the A triple F, which is the PFAS litigation, our main partner, Paul Napoli, is on the executive committee of the MBL, the multi-district litigation. In the early 2010s, cases of water districts and other entities that were impacted by PFAS started, pardon the pun, but propelling up from around the country. And in 2018, the federal judiciary decided to consolidate the cases of what's called an MBL, multi-district litigation, based in the federal district court of Charleston, South Carolina. Currently, there are close to about six hundred plaintiffs, of which we represent about a third. Some of the other cases, and I mention these because it leads into some of the other points where I think it's important to know about our firm. Read recently of the opioid litigation settlement of twenty-six billion dollars. Hunter Schaller, one of our partners, was the lead in that. Also, just a loan for New York State, it was one point one billion dollars. And that scourge of, hopefully that money stacks falling out to the plaintiffs and to the communities that have been impacted by that office scourge throughout the country. It's impacted families at so many levels. We're the lead counsel up in Flint, Michigan, or from here, I guess we're over at Flint, Michigan. And it was said in some media on that last night, about he wanted to replace all the great pipes in many areas in another city of Michigan. We represent, we are very proud that the National Water Association, with thirty-one thousand members, has brought us on board as their counsel to represent the business. NTBE, Paul Napoli was the first attorney to go up. After that, that is the detriment that's left in the ground from gas stations that don't fully clean themselves out, these help the communities. And then, of course, representing the state of Colorado in a similar people of PFAS toxic tort litigation. I go on and on about this, not in any way to brag, but because that level of success has allowed the firm in incredibly strong position that we can take these cases on at no cost to our clients. And I do think that's a big, big benefit here if we're fortunate enough to come to an agreement with your commission as representing in this litigation. If you could go on to the next slide, please. These are some of the settlements that the firm has put together on behalf, that's just a quick summary of recent cases on behalf of our clients. And again, I guess I am here to tell you, if you're going to get involved in this, which we think you should, we should be on your side in this. We've got incredible legal talent, and I don't even necessarily put myself in that group. But if you go on to the next slide, please. These are our three primary partners, and then, next slide, please. To myself, several other partners, eighteen associates that are assigned to this, and Sam Wade, who's become a very dear friend of mine. Sam ran the National Rural Water Association for thirty-seven years, and when he retired, he came on board with us as our water consultant. Another thing we brought to the table is an incredibly, incredibly experienced team of water specialists and water professionals that can help, that when testing starts here, we can assist with that, that will be able to help interpret the results and determine, help you determine what your damages may be, what future remediation, or, short, mid, and long-term cost for remediation may be. And so we've got a very, very talented team that can help with that testing and going forward with it to be, be it you decide to do it on your own, if eventually the state of North Dakota orders you to do it, or if, as we've seen, the federal government, and recently, there was a previous MCL recommended that they drop to seventy. The EPA.
I don't know.
But it's, I think it's late as two years ago, the EPA recommended it was four hundred parts.
And then they dropped it to seventy within two years, I think. So they just keep dropping it and dropping it. Also, it's important to note that every state and, I think, county sometimes have different levels that are allowed. Like you were telling me that Maine tried to drop it down to one, and it's at seventy, and eventually their legislature pushed it to ten, so. And we'll get into more of the science of it a little bit, because I know it's probably a little daunting.
I know. And I'm always careful to see isolated over as well, so please just wave or something.
Wait, can you hear it back up?
Yeah, it's jumped around around the country. If we could go on to the next slide. In my home state of Massachusetts, the MCL is twenty parts per trillion. And as of October first of this year, that's become mandatory. So every water system in the Commonwealth has had to start testing.
I don't think North Dakota has any requirements. Did you see any edits? Yeah, so I don't think there are any requirements for the amount of PFAS or PFAS that can be allowed in the water supply, so.
We've got, New York State is ten parts, New Jersey thirteen parts per trillion. As we said, the state of Maine wanted to go to one, they settled at ten. So depending on where you are, it's, it's under tremendous scrutiny. So the background on it is here, these are the manufacturers, these, and, oh, see, there are twenty-three defendants in this case. And the significance of that is that if you've got this in your water, in your landfill, in your farmlands, which we're seeing with some of our clients, it came from one of these defendants. So it's a.
Manufacturer, yeah.
It's a limited population. So we know who made this. We also have significant evidence showing that for over fifty years, they were aware of the cancer-causing effects, testicular cancer, thyroid cancer, low birth weight in children. If you saw the movie, not to get topical, Dark Waters, where Paul Rudd played the lawyer Rob Balotelli. We work a lot with Rob. And he was the guy who went up against DuPont, when he discovered that some of the people working at the DuPont plants in West Virginia, in Pennsylvania, West Virginia, yeah, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, female employees were having issues with reproductive systems, with low birth weights, and with birth defects with children they were having.
And the company's knew about this. So I think going back to just explain what PFAS is and what these are, I think would be helpful to, just so, they're called forever chemicals, first of all, because they don't ever disintegrate. They don't, nothing biological breaks them down, which is a big problem with chemicals. And, you know, just think about anything in any environment. Like if it's not broken down, it just stays there, but it has to go somewhere. So it goes into the soil, it goes into the water, it goes into our livers, it goes into our fat cells, it goes into animals, to fish, into every sort of natural resource. It's inhaled. It's, you know, you inhale it, you consume it, you drink it, it's all of it. And it never leaves your system, or it takes years and years. And so as we look over to the next, if we can go to the next slide, it's found in all of these substances, is where PFAS is found. Monster cookware, pesticides, shampoo, photography, here in our case, firefighting foam is just what we're going to talk about. You know, it's in so many different things. And I think you will probably give a better background on PFAS than that, but that's sort of like bird's eye, high-level view of what it is.
It's been found in, recently Congressman Dangle from Michigan had a press conference where she announced women's mascara.
Yeah.
Pet, pet, cleaning, or pet shampoo to do with that.
Yeah, and just one other thing, just thinking about the manufacturers, and, you know, reading the lawsuits. These, similar to the tobacco litigation, the manufacturers have known about this and how pervasive it is, and how it doesn't break down, and how it stays in your system. They've known about this since, like, the fifties or sixties. They've done testing, they have research, they have all this. They didn't, they didn't report to the government like they were supposed to. And they knew that it's causing birth defects, cancer, all of these things. And again, it's just another one of these cover-ups that these companies did, because they never came to much money by selling it in various products.
We'll go on to the next slide. So this is a, a broad view of the United States. We've got actually a better one, which actually shows the impact on northeast Minnesota, North Dakota, in a moment or two. But again, just mentioning some of the the ailments that have been attributed to this. I'm very curious, after we come out of this pandemic and the impact upon people with already compromised immune systems, what we'll be seeing as time goes on. And so. Yeah, it's very impactful. If you want to the next slide. So specifically to Grand Forks, you've got an airforce base, you've got an airport, you've got a part training facility, you have a, an airport, an air training facility. So actually, what I should make clear here, and people do get concerned, it's funny, I've been, I saw on the way in, I just got the notice, I'm very actually involved with the Association of Defense communities in another hat that I wear. And I just got the notice of their annual conference in San Antonio next month. We are not suing the air force. We are not suing the Department of Defense or the federal government. We feel they're, we're due, that they were duped by the makers of this as well. So, yeah, some people do get concerned, well, I don't want to go after the air force. Well, I don't need it. And so we're not, because I realize what an important part of the community here at Grand Forks, that airbase is. So what's going on with the case? I probably should talk about that a little bit, as opposed to blathering on about ourselves or where the history is. It was filed in January of twenty eighteen, or consolidated in January of twenty eighteen in Charleston, South Carolina, the federal court, federal district court. Right now, we're still in the discovery phase. Documents are being gathered on both sides. Very important factor here is that Paul Napoli, in cases like this, where there are many, many attorneys, many, many firms on both sides, the court will pick an executive team to basically manage the progress of the case. And three lawyers on the plaintiff's side, three lawyers on the other side. Paul Napoli is on the executive team. So he's at the table literally every day. Any procedural motion, any motion to dismiss, which there have been several, all denied. Any scheduling motions, Paul is there. And he's there leading the settlement talks as well. And of course, we can't talk too much about this. But I do think it's indicative of where the defendants are, that a settlement may be in the offing. At the end of last year, DuPont, which had spun off two subsidiaries that are also being plaintiffs of this, put in four billion dollars in a lockbox in anticipation of settlement for those two subsidiaries. So that tells you, I think, the indication of where the case is going. Depositions have been taken on a significant level on both sides. If we go on to the next slide. This is probably a little bit out of order. This should have been a little further. Is there, is there a way to focus? You can go back. Do you, is there a way to expand now? Zoom up to North Dakota? Because actually, well, if you take a closer look at it.
You guys have it on your screens, right? So if you look for Grand Forks, you can kind of see the, there's four little symbols, I guess, that represent Grand Forks, and I, sorry, we can't zoom on it, but.
But it's, this map, I believe, is also impactful to show you that. And this is just from open source data compiled by both state environmental authorities and by EPA. There you go. So you can see, there's already indications of the use of the A triple F foam, which the primary, which is a primary ingredient, the A triple F, the primary ingredient.
In the lawsuit.
In PFAS.
Yeah, right. And I think we should probably mention that, is that the A triple F is really the subject of this lawsuit, in that it's the firefighting foam used by the airforce base, by the airport to put out fires, you know, for training purposes, and, you know, in an emergency or what happened. So, yeah, but you can see where Grand Forks is. It's got, you know, the military, it's got the airport, it's got fire training, it's got basically all four quadruple threat of using AFF, but it's publicly, public information, right?
And this is it. We don't have any significant testing happening yet, that we can already tell. If you go on to the next slide.
I believe it's also used for a spray foam when they're doing aerial spraying on crops. They leave a foam for the lines, and it's a DuPont product.
Sure. It's, it is every place. So along those lines, the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, which provides water, but also does wastewater, and by the way, and I don't know if you're in charge of wastewater here, but that's kind of the next emerging issue we looked at. But they've been taking the wastewater, turning it into pellets for years and years, and selling those pellets as agricultural, as fertilizer, and around New York. And it's, two years, I was discovered at astronomical levels of PFAS. So now they're pulling the arrow, trying to figure what they're going to do. This is, so the vision of the case, similar to the asbestos litigation, the tobacco litigation, NTBE, is either through settlement or through judgment after trial, is for a amount of money to be set aside in a trust fund to be administered by the court for impacted communities to be able to apply to, much along the lines of not just the asbestos trust fund, which was set up in EWE, I think, and it's still being drawn on. Also, Paul Napoli worked with Ken Feinberg, and I don't know if that explains it, but he administered the nine eleven trust fund. And Paul is and was on that board. The office at the time was in role of that. So many of our staff at the time were personal witnesses as well. Eleventh of that year. So the vision is that through settlements, and we are very confident, or hopeful, hopeful in some sense, that it could be a settlement prior to trial. This is the timeline going forward through the rest of this year, next year, and into January of twenty-three. Judge Gergel has picked eight plaintiffs, whom we feel is are indicative of the broader group of plaintiffs that will, if the case were to go to trial, could demonstrate the strengths and weaknesses of both sides. And oftentimes, what we anticipate is we get closer to that, that, that the settlement talks will get more urgent and possible happen. So a significant part of that is if there's a deal in that plaintiff's that are in the system at that time. So, along with, is that the last one?
Yeah, I'll have to back up.
Okay, oh, right, right. If we go on to the next slide. So this is important. The government contractor defense, which they've tried to use, has been pretty much shut down. The defendants were trying to save it because they, they were trying to basically put the cloak of dealing with the federal government, dealing with the Department of Defense, they were trying to get the protection that is going on. We are also actually alive at the Department of Justice and protecting against that. But what this also touches on is another thing that we bring to the table. We do really feel that we're a full-service law firm. We maintain a full-time lobbying footprint in DC to track what's going on with the infrastructure process, the infrastructure bill, Surface Water Drinking Act, and other pieces of legislation that could impact you as far as the protection of your waters is concerned. We don't know, and I wouldn't, again, expectation management, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that, once the settlement happens, and we've worked with you for the next year or two, a projection where your remediation costs are going to be, if we're going to get you a hundred percent. So what we do is we look for other opportunities, to be grant, grant making opportunities, or potential to work with your congressional delegation to see what could happen, to get you other monies that would be able to impact and improve your water delivery system here. And I'll use the example of, you know, we have a small, it's a small town, not a small client, there's no such thing as a small client, but a small town in western Massachusetts that really, they have about five thousand households they've served. And, but they didn't have a full-time grant writer on staff, they only had a part-time town administrator. And we sat with them, there were grants available for mass department of environmental protection for their planning process, for their architectural process. And we were successfully writing their grant application to the state firm, and it was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That was all part of our service. We, the branch of the minister for that, you know, having been in politics for a while, I kind of, that works, so that was helpful. But it's similar from state to state in place to place.
I think just on that note, too, the level of involvement that the firm has, I know we've heard from other people that, in the opioid litigation, a lot of times, the law firms have not been very responsive to their clients. And, you know, we have a whole system of communicating with our clients. We have monthly reports that are sent out, you know, direct contact to all of the people that are on the case, including.
Oh, you're on my, you're on my cell phone.
You can harass him.
People are shy about calling me at eleven o'clock at night, so.
Yeah, so that's a good thing, too, is we don't, we don't want.
But being active, well.
Yeah, so, you know, there is a very structured method in which we communicate with our clients, and we are available to our clients as well. It's kind of a method. How great.
Well, you're moving back here, Bridget.
How much you think? And build me a house?
We'll do what we can. So that's where I think that's about the last.
Yeah.
So, okay, this is touching on the, what we're doing. We have a weekly that I participated with, with our lobbying effort in DC. And we've actually got, trying to get a meeting in the first two weeks of November with the deputy administrator of the EPA, to find out, you know, what we think they can do, or what they think they can do as far as short-term help to water districts have a bit of that. Find out, you know, what, what we think they could do, or what they think they can do as far as short-term help to water districts have a bit of that. So again, another service we bring. You know, I don't know what the outcome of this meeting will be. It's a public meeting, but what we have observed with other clients in the past is. You start talking about PFAS, the internet is an amazing thing, people start getting worked up about it. People, ratepayers and constituents start pinging you with emails and phone calls. The media, I don't know if there's any media here today from the Grand Forks Herald. We have a full-time crisis communication staff where we could work with you, and we have with many of our other clients to develop a narrative. So that you can speak to your constituents and to your ratepayers. And be, you know, becoming much more watchable. I think they will. If, if passing prologue, I think they will, we've seen many other communities. So. That's it.
Yeah, we have, one, maybe time for questions, too.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think I do. Well, I'm just thinking outside the box. I mean, we're in Grand Forks and so all those items that you talked about that, you know, you'll be litigating or whatever is. In basically the city of Grand Forks. And so looking at overall Grand Forks County. I don't know if, if, what fits in for some of our smaller communities. I mean, some of them have airports, they're small, you know. But are there, would those other areas in Grand Forks County be looked at as part of this as well or not?
So tell me who? So I was looking earlier today at the, the water, the water system here, which you guys are in this.
County.
The kind of.
Rural waters.
Rural waters.
Yeah.
So what, and, and that's, that's the initial that we're, yeah. For those other towns, municipalities, communities that are part of the county, who, are they wells? Where do they draw their water from?
Aquifer primarily.
Aquifer. And that's in the, that's in the county. Probably the biggest consideration in the county with the water would be any type of chemicals or fertilizers being used by, in agriculture. Probably the biggest issue that we have with agriculture is there may be farmers that have irrigation systems. And it's cheaper, easier to push your chemicals through the irrigation system than it is to put it on top of plea. And whether by plain or by, by a spreader, a sprayer. When they do that, they often get caught by water commission, state water commission. But the fine is minimal in the state of North Dakota, meaning minimal. Sometimes they're more willing to pay for the minimal fine than they are to.
You do apologize to National.
Yeah, right, right.
So I guess the question would be on, Chris, on, on your board, if you wanted to. Represent or service those communities in, in the suit. If, as I look further down, down range, where we do get to the point where you are. Putting together your application to the trust fund, let's say the way we envision it right now is the way it goes to fruition. Would you want to service those communities and service those individuals in the remediation of their water? So that's a decision that we have to make at that point. If they, if they test in official images, they could come up with a plan of how to mediate. Kind of the program of the county, I haven't. Kind of program that they have set that up going forward. Kind of, off the top of my head, I have a vision of that. So the short answer is yes, you could definitely all.
Yeah.
If the board doesn't approve it.
And I think working out, you know, where the air force base is and the, the more rural communities around there, I mean, that's not the city of Grand Forks. It's around the air force base. I mean, I would assume that, you know, that would be rural water supply or, you know, some, or there would be these people impacted that have rural. Rural, I can't say that word right now, rural water supply. And they, you know, the AFF, the A triple F, you know, that very well have impacted them considering that the air force base is right there. So, you know, the officer could have.
Well.
I don't know. I don't know about testing, but.
Well, I use the example of, I mean, I mean, they could come to us individually as well, if it's in another, you know, sovereign entity. We've got all different types of combinations of how clients will align themselves. But as far as an aquifer is concerned, there's a lot of issues in southern New Hampshire and north eastern Massachusetts. The new aquifer that comes down out of the White Mountains of New Hampshire and feeds a lot of those communities. Then it comes through the cities of Concord, Manchester, Nashua, New Hampshire. It's impacted PFAS, it's a big industrial towns. So that's impacted cities thirty-four miles south of there. So I can see that. I don't want to, I hope, I would not. We've also seen in. In Mississippi until Louisiana, where aquifers, almost, in, in Mississippi is incredibly impacted by PFAS. But the aquifers somehow seem to clean themselves in the downrange, in the duties, that has been affecting them. So. When, once testing begins.
I think with joining, you know, as part of being a class action lawsuit. This would probably go to our administrative services committee. And that's a committee that would take a look at this information and come back with a recommendation to the full commission, I would assume. And probably when we set that, maybe a possibility of having you on via Zoom or a conference call. So that if we had more questions once we have that meeting, then we could have further discussions.
Is that a subcommittee of, of your board?
Of the commission, yes, yes.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. I'm good. Just, just some information.
Correct. Yeah, of course. And also do some checking with the state if they do test water for aquifers, talk to our water board. Also the state water commission to see, you know, what the, what the rules and regulations are in the state of North Dakota.
There's a possibility the airbase may have done some testing as well somehow. And I know there was a congressional intent in one of the previous NDAAs to get them to test. Don't know what I should have followed up on. That, that could be potentially a FOIA request that we could do as well.
Well, certainly, we just had a commission, a meeting today, this morning or this afternoon prior to this meeting. But I'm assuming either November's meetings or December's meetings, we could schedule another meeting and have this as the discussion point.
That's right. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
All right. Nice to meet you all. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the sheriff's department or office. The first item is twenty twenty-one state homeland security grant award.
Good evening, Commissioner, and I'm here. Dave Schumacher appearing for Sheriff Schneider this evening, and I have just come before you with a grant award notice. We applied for ES grant and we were awarded forty-eight thousand fifty dollars for a sensible drone to assist our water rescue team. Like I said, we were, we were granted that. So I'm here today to ask for chair's signature and initials on the document for appropriate. Everybody else have any questions?
I don't believe so. Did we, we need a motion for that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Easy.
Easy. We will get that signed. Thank you very much, Mr. Schumacher. Next item on the agenda is correctional center.
Members of the commission, I come before you with a budgetary request, one last thing that I would like to do today. But I feel it's necessary, and I put this together last week to bring to you, there's two large equipment things that have come up at the correction central. I would decide in my budget. We have three commercial dryers, of which one logic board has failed. Our population is such that we're approaching that two hundred mark almost every day. We have sort of a third dryer in there, working as it should. The cost to replace it is just over six thousand dollars. I think you have a copy of everything in your package here. Total of six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars to replace that dryer. That will be for a commercial sized dryer, which is substantially different than our household dryers. And then the other thing that I come before you is our radios. We are, the radios we have are at their end of life. Not only that, we're, we're having some serious issues with some of them. Some of them are not operating the way they should. The batteries are not lasting. The last thing we need is failure of communication in that building. And rather than invest many thousands of dollars, which it would take just to get the batteries. I come before you asking you to take advantage of a state radio reimbursement program. Which if we purchase the radios now, that we would get approximately forty-two thousand dollars back from the state. Bring in our net cost rather than a gross of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for all these radios down to eighty-eight thousand. And then I would propose adding about another eleven thousand dollars to give some different leathers and stuff to protect those radios a little bit better. What happens is frequently you have an all-officer call, the radios have clips, there are another officer belts. We will run into down the hallway and just hear the radio after radio fall off their belt. So we're looking to get good leather holsters and stuff for them to try to take care of them a little better than what has been done in the past. My budget right now, through seventy-five percent of the budget, my expenses are at sixty-seven percent. And my income is at eighty-six point four four percent. The per diem income in particular is at over ninety percent. So what I would ask of you and not to reach into other pockets or whatever to, to pay for this, but to utilize the savings that I've been able, we've been able to do at the correction center. And just use that money within my budget, just reallocate it within the budget to pay for this. That way we won't have to find it elsewhere. So that's my request, yes.
So you're looking for, it's the total of the radios with the accessories and the dryer is a hundred and thirty thousand, six thirty-five? No.
Hundred and six.
Hundred and six thousand.
After reimbursement, it would be about a hundred and six thousand dollars.
Okay, and you're looking at the total cost for your budget would be under a hundred thousand?
The, 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 the cost to my budget would be a hundred and six thousand.
Okay.
The total is, would be about a hundred and, what is it, a hundred and fifteen thousand, a little less than that.
Okay.
The, the dryer, the radios, accessories, less the reimbursement.
Okay, and then the reimbursement would come back to the county?
Correct. My, my thought is a reimbursement problem would not be received until two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
So just make that, make you aware of that, that my budget would have to absorb all of that right now, actually.
Okay, so at this point, you're looking for a motion to be made to reallocate some dollars within your budget for the hundred and thirty thousand. No, hundred and fifty, approximately a hundred, less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that you can purchase the radios, the accessories, and the six thousand one hundred and some dollars for just the dryer. And then the reimbursement, once you get it, will go back into your budget.
To my budget or to the general, I would assume?
All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Move approval.
All right, there's the motion. And the second, any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is the county engineer. Mr. West, are you present? All right, Mr. West.
There he is. Can you hear me?
He can hear you, Mr. West.
Bear, bear with me, if you wouldn't mind, give me ten seconds, I'll get pulled over.
Okay, that'd be good. Don't hit anything. And don't tip over that truck.
One minute here. One second here.
Yesterday, I had an opportunity to see a snow cloud and a grater, moving dirt off the highway. My next period. Eight minutes of. Moving dirt off the, literally dirt, mud. It worked.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, Mr. West, the first thing on the agenda is motor grater bids.
Yeah, I got motor grater bids. Our current lease is up next August. And in anticipation of long procurement times and prices going up, I did it a little earlier than normal. The bids were, were fairly good. It was uneventful. Everything was pretty straightforward with the bid. And we got bids from Caterpillar and John Deere. John Deere was low by quite a ways. Their standard machine, the standard drive, re-rewound drive machine was three thousand twenty-eight dollars a month a machine. And if we wanted to opt for the all-wheel drive option, that'd be fourteen dollars more a month a machine. I don't know if the board remembers, five years ago, we did discuss that and it was three or four hundred dollars a month a machine more. And we opted not to, but. With this pricing, my recommendation would be to go with the all-wheel drives because of the, the very close pricing.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. West? What are the wishes of the commission?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we accept the bid from John Deere for the all-wheel drive at four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our maintenance certification with the DOT. This is an annual certi, this is an annual certification of, that we are maintaining our federal aid roads. We are, and I would look for. We are, and I'd look for signatures from our chair, Ms. Nelson and Ms. Womsted on the form.
Okay, so does someone move to have the auditor, the state's attorney and the commission chair sign this form to approve that or to. State that we are keeping the federal certified roads up to their condition? Yes, that motion. Okay, is there a second to that motion? Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you. My last item for consideration is our future federal aid program schedule. I would like to ask that our county road twenty-five or Eagle Avenue east of eighty-one. I would like to ask that our County Road 25 or Eagle Avenue east of eighty-one or east of Reynolds be added to the future list. This was discussed and kind of verbally approved about a year ago, or a year and a half ago. That if money was ever available, we'd like to pave that. The board, the Trail County Commission Board did officially add it to their list this morning. I, I wasn't able to attend that, but I would anticipate that it's all contingent on funding being available. And our, our logic behind adding it to the list now is with, with future federal aid funds looming in the near future, hopefully some are coming that by having it on the list, if money becomes available, it's quicker and easier to get the project done if it's already on our list. And at this point, I'm not asking for any funds be spent, just that we add it to the future list. And I, I don't have a date or a year recommendation for the board, but simply it just be added to the list and that would be my request.
Okay, would anyone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that County Road 25 be added to the federal aid project schedule.
All right, is there a second to that motion? All right, it has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you, that is all that I have. Are there any other questions for me?
I do not think so, but thank you very much, Mr. West, and travel safely.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good day.
You guys too.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, the next item on the agenda, number ten, is to set minimum sales price on county tax titled property.
Madam Chair, I recommend the board move the appraised value of their real estate acquired by tax deed and to set the minimum sale price at the amount of three years taxes due plus special assessments, penalties, interest and costs. Plus nine mile equals one estimated taxes and specials for the current assessment year plus a hundred dollars. And set the property appraisal hearing for November second at four P M.
Okay, so does someone want to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion exactly as she read it on.
Does someone want to second that? And it is the second advice, Commissioner Knopf, thank you. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. And then do we have a notice of intent to evict?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I also need approval for the, uh, notice of intent to evict for the chair and the state attorney's signature.
Okay, and what are the wishes of the commission?
Madam Chair, have a question?
Yes.
What is the situation with these evictions? When we take over a property, if they've got it, are these tenants who have been there? Or why are we, why do we need notices to evict?
Madam Chair, we have taken these properties, they are already in the county's name. We've taken them for three years, like, yes. And so these are the properties that will be sold the third Tuesday in November. And if they pay their taxes, they will not be affected before that, that date.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion for the notice of intent to evict?
So moved.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. All right, then the next item on the agenda is the COVID response team.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, no report today.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will move on to item twelve, Director of Administration, Mr. Ford.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. First thing is the Icon Architectural Services contract. This should look familiar to the board, as this was brought before the board a few weeks ago. And, and the commission decided to table until the county had a better understanding of what it was going to do with its ARPA funds. But at the, at the direction of the board, we're bringing it back today. And there is, Mr. Wesley from Icon is here on the line to answer any questions. What he have before you though is, is a contract between the county of Grand Forks and Icon to provide architectural services on the correctional center expansion and juvenile detention center. It's set at a twenty million dollar budget. And, and the cost or the fee for Icon's services is seven point two-five percent of that twenty million. Keep in mind though that anything outside the scope of this contract could incur available hours plus, plus ten percent. Looking at a twelve to eighteen month term, if we go beyond that term, fees could change afterwards. Madam State Attorney, before I turn it over to Mr. Wesley, do you have any thoughts to add?
Is that thirty-six month term? Let me read that up. Is that corrected?
It's a thirty-six month term, okay.
Madam Chair, in addition to Mr. Ford's summary, I would just, what he outlined is accurate about the additional fees, I would also call to the board's attention, page twelve, which outlines some of the additional fees that would be beyond what is collected in the seven point two-five percent in this contract. On page twelve, it outlines the additional fees are borne by, but if, if it lists the architect's responsibility, that would be above and beyond the seven point two-five percent that's outlined in this contract. In addition, if the project goes beyond that thirty-six months, if it's no fault of the architect, anything beyond that thirty-six months would also be built separately as supplementary, supplementary services. So even if it's a supply chain issue that's beyond the county's control, we can expect for that to be built separately if it goes beyond that thirty-six month term.
Okay, discussion by the board.
Madam Chair, Mr. Wesley from Icon is with us, if there are any questions for him.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Wesley? Now, we're talking about the, the the addition to the, the jail and adding on the juvenile detention center onto that facility. Add twenty million dollars on the building. Thirty-six months is the contract that is before us, seven point two-five percent, plus some additional fees. Any questions of Mr. Wesley? And we have talked about this in the past. Mr. Wesley, do you want to step forward, please? Where are you? I have questions. We're talking about a twenty million dollar project to add what to that current facility?
What, what Mr. Wesley navigates is technical difficulties, that would be for adding additional pod.
Okay.
And then looking at building juvenile detention facility. The commission set an overall budget of thirty-one million for that, for that project. And the twenty million in the contract is for actual construction costs, that's all, Icon comes up with that number.
Actual construction costs, not finishing anything on the inside.
That's a question, that would be a question for Mr. Wesley if he's able to respond.
Okay, then, while Mr. Wesley is able to come on, when we're talking about the juvenile detention center, currently that facility can hold what, up to twelve?
Over fifteen now.
Over fifteen, is that the same number we're talking about? Or is it an addition or subtraction to where it currently is, what the space currently is?
We, we need to still have those discussions with Icon, ma'am, but we would now be looking to subtract from the current.
Okay.
I think it's at least wanting to remember, that sounds correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, still nothing from Mr. Wesley. We might have to table this to our next meeting. Or do you want to move forward on this discussion?
Do you have questions?
What are the questions you have for?
Basically, I wanted to know about the space. I want to know if the twenty million project is finishing the inside of this facility or not.
This is Tom, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Did you hear my question, Mr. Wesley?
Well, as I was scrambling to try to get unmuted, because I'm dialed in and, and I'm also on my computer, so I apologize for the
That's okay.
To get there. So can you, yeah, re-question that again, I'm sorry.
Based on the contract that we're looking at and the plans of adding on to the current jail that we have, is the, is the dollar amount for the construction, is it for the exterior of the building construction? Or does that include finishing up the interior of the building as well?
Yeah, it would, it would include that it finished off in
Interior of the building?
And in terms of scope with, within, you know, what we, what we determined to be, you know, whether it's the juvenile detention, infirmary, a multitude of things that we have to explore yet with Brett and his, his team, so it would be an all-inclusive cost, construction cost, and then our, our fee would be based off of that construction cost that we work with the construction manager at risk as well during the pricing and guarantee maximum price exercises.
Okay, and then do you have any idea with the plans within this scope, how many, we're talking about maximum for the juvenile justice, juvenile center, detention center?
Do we have a maximum price allocated towards that yet?
Maximum house, house, how many would be capacity?
Not yet. We, we have to get through that initial phase of discovery with, we've done that initial study early on. And some of that needs to be readdressed or new discovery based on the current needs. A lot of those were COVID impacted, you know, changes in terms of programmatic needs of the correctional center that Brett will have to help us define, so that's all included in that, in this fee that we're discussing, so.
Okay, thank you very much for your answers, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve the contract for that contract.
Okay, is there, you're seconding that motion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If there is no discussion, we'll vote on the motion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. All right, then the next item on the agenda is the county commission office remodel. Mr. Ford.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, so this is actually something, if you recall, was actually in more of a three to five year plan to revisit that, that office space. And I'm, I'm not gonna, I won't get into the weeds this one, because I've, I've visited with each of you a few times regarding this. So it was on a bit of longer range plan, but COVID has accelerated those plans. And with, with the ARPA funds, looking to leverage that, quite, quite frankly, the environment that, 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 that office space is in is not very appropriate for the COVID world that we're living in. A lot of meetings happen in that room internally, externally with partners, et cetera. And so looking to, to leverage some of those ARPA dollars, as the commission so approves to, to reconfigure that room to be more appropriate for, for the COVID world, better utilize the space, upgrade a lot of the, the technology for virtual meetings. And just make better use of it and make it a safer meeting environment for, for as much as it is used and it's used quite often. So I think the, the total amount in, in the estimate with, with Norby's bid and then upgrading the A V is twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. If the commission approves it, would need chair's signature on the Norby's estimate and they're requiring a deposit of seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and, and forty cents. Have to answer any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of Mr. Ford?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the remodeling of the county commission meeting room with a bid of twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. It's really an inappropriate facility right now to be used during this time. The plan Mr. Ford's come up with will make it a whole lot safer and more functional. Right now, we're wasting space in there, so.
And where all the funds come from?
ARPA.
Okay, and that will be a part of the motion?
That'll be part of the motion to be paid out with these ARPA.
Okay, is there a second, all right, Chair's signature?
We need a chair's signature as well.
Okay, we have a motion and the second, any discussion? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion is carried. Then the next item is the county office building controlled pod access.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask that we table that. After the incidents, plural, that I briefed the commission on that have happened in the parking ramp and some feedback from, from you as a board, I visited with Mr. Kraszewski. And we have some, some ideas of how we can increase the security and the safety in that building that would be encompassed into this project. So I've asked him to, he and I still need to meet to, to discuss that. There'll be a different proposal and some different pricing, so we're, because of that, we're not ready. So I'd like to table that one, ma'am, until more appropriate. And the only other thing I have for the board is I'll be in San Antonio attending the A T C conference installation innovation forum. Whoever first to the fourth, I'll zoom in though, because Ms. Neal and I, we visited with Mr. Mr. Falk, Commissioner Falk, will, will bring a premium pay ARPA plan to the board at the November second meeting.
Okay, wonderful.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, State's Attorney, Ms. Womsted, do you have anything?
Madam Chair, I have no report, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Then the next item is committee reports, Commissioner Knopf. Okay, Commissioner, hang on, hang it.
I'll have you report the same things that many of us were involved in last week with the generals consultants who are here. There was a dinner with them and the mayor on Tuesday evening. Grand Sky ribbon cutting out there for the M T one building. And had missed a couple of the other events that I know some of you might have been on, but it was a pretty good week and interesting week for base retention and all that, so it was worthwhile.
Okay, good, thank you. Commissioner Ross.
This one, Dave said, was very interesting week last week and very enlightening. M P O meeting tomorrow, I'm doing, I should be talking about the bridge again, so.
Okay.
Topic of discussion.
Mr. Falk.
Went to a very nice tour out at the Grand Force Air Force Base on Thursday as part of all this process. Very positive outlook for the base at this time. Met with Mr. Sawyer, also out of Grand Sky. He was very positive, he's got several potential tenants he's talking to, I don't know if any will come to fruition, but it's probably been the most positive I've seen his agenda in the last two years, so. That was it on that. Now, we do have to talk about administrative services, though.
Yes. Go ahead, I have nothing to report.
No, I won't say it, I don't. Okay. There you go. Well, we took care of Mr. Ford's.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it, very good. I, I got, and I need mine with my hand written all time. Um, I think we all received a copy of the the, the funds that we're, uh, approved at the administrative services to be forward with in the year of twenty twenty one. And yeah, I, I, I'm going to make a motion to approve the funds as distributed, uh, in the, in the, uh, handout that Ms. Nelson gave us. Uh, with the exception of when we first talked about, uh, the correctional sunny center, we, uh, there's a million dollars that we're approving. It'll come out in twenty twenty two in the second half, not in this first, uh, payment. And also move that we include in there a four hundred thousand dollar commitment to the, uh, Career Impact Academy, which will probably come out of twenty twenty two money also, is that right, Ms. Auditor?
That's correct.
Correct. And other than that, the remaining amounts could be paid out as soon as that could be arranged for the office. And that'd be for the chair's signature.
Question, did I include the motion we just passed on?
Yeah, I didn't include that because we already passed.
It was already passed.
We passed that.
That was separate.
That's, that's.
Well, that's what we did.
Yeah, okay, he always comes first, so we, we took care of it.
So there is a motion, there is a motion on the floor, um, that includes the items listed on the second, uh, second section, uh, from juvenile detention, H back improvement, all the way down to the highway revenue loss. And then that would include the second payment section, Career Impact Academy of four hundred thousand dollars and one million dollars going to the, um, the, uh, infirmary at the jail, um, that is a motion, is there a second to that motion? Okay, it has been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, a million dollars, that would have to come out of the, the dispersal of the twenty twenty two money.
Right.
We've approved it, but there isn't money for that right now.
Right.
Uh, and I have one question of, uh, Ms. Nelson, would those checks, well, like in the next month or?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I don't know if we're just going to be sending checks to, I mean, to Altru and I think maybe we want to let them know the funds are coming.
Yeah, okay, okay, because I know I already got one question, so that's one.
Oh, sure, um. Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, well, as far as the funding, obviously the funding that's going to most of our, our programs internally, I would be more than happy to talk with Altru, Spectra Health and Earthwood Deakness. Um, and C D S C, I'd probably give that assignment to Ms. Knopf since she is, is, uh, heavily, uh, affiliated with them. And, uh, to inform them about the end, the Red River Regional Child Advocacy Center, I would do that as well to explain to them the amounts of money that are coming to them. And I think they probably should invoice the county for that amount of money. But I would explain to them, uh, each different entity what the funds are for. As far as Altru, um, Spectra Health, um, Red River Regional, we just talked about that, I think, going into their budgets to support additional trauma for the pandemic. Uh, but we did have specific things for Altru Spectra Health and Earthwood Deakness. So I would be more than happy to meet with them if Ms. Knopf, if she would talk with C D S C and then I'll talk to Red River Regional Child Advocacy as well.
And as long as everybody's getting jobs, I'm wondering maybe if, uh, Commissioner Ross would talk to Public Health about those vehicles to see.
Already did.
I already asked, yeah, that.
Already did.
That's good.
All right, good.
I did ask that because he had experience.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll solve that too. All right, very good, we can move on.
Okay, so assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. All right, uh, under new business twenty twenty two election joint powers agreements, Grand Fork City Park and School, Ms. Nelson.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I have two joint powers agreement for the elections that will occur next year. I have the change to the Grand Fork City Park and School that states that we need to select the polling sites put into joint powers agreement, and then I have removed payment. And they were payment, which is eight thousand dollars each, is a minimal amount, but I'm hoping that will entice them to sign this and allow us to select the voting. So I need a motion to approve Grand Fork City Parks, well, one joint powers agreement. The other one is all small cities will have the same agreement that they have had in the past.
Can that be one motion or can they, do they need to be one motion?
Sure.
Okay, so we need, uh, joint powers agreements with Grand Fork City Parks and Schools and the small cities in, uh, Grand Forks County. It's so moved by Commissioner, uh, Ross and seconded by Commissioner Knopf, thank you very much. Um, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the U S Department of Health Human Services requests.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I, um, this Krista reached out to me and she would like to meet with you. Uh, that the, the U S Department of Health would like to meet with you prior to a meeting and spend about thirty minutes with you, and so I said I would bring it forward and see if you're available.
Sure, I would be more than happy to meet with her.
And, uh, would the whole board want to meet with her? I think they're interested in having the whole board meet, so when would that be?
Did you notice that it's a special meeting just before our next meeting?
Well, didn't you already said something out first, that something right before the next meeting?
Yes.
What do we got?
We're talking about.
We have a whole world.
Whole world.
We've got that set up, so.
That is how we, that is already the first, uh, the first Tuesday.
Remember, November sixth.
What time did that get set for, two or?
Two thirty or two.
Two thirty? Two thirty? So if you wanted to, you could do.
Two o'clock. Two o'clock.
At two o'clock, I remember second.
Yeah, see if she would be available two o'clock, I know that's second.
I'm gonna let you know, all right, and that would be a virtual meeting, so we could
participate, that would be wonderful. And then two thirty, the administrative services, correct? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is Nurse Court, a Department of Environmental Quality permit application review.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I believe that's just notification, there's no action needed. They're just notifying you of the public comment here.
I would, uh, suggest that, uh, uh, whoever our contact is with, uh, the Grand Fork Air Force Base should probably, um, probably make them aware of this. The only reason I say that is because this, this, uh, particular, um, water, wastewater that is out there is close to, um, where they do fly drones. And, um, also where some of the planes may be lowering into, uh, well, not so much landing because they're opposite directions, but it is kind of a hazard area. And we may want to make Grand Sky, uh, privy of this as well as informing the commander of the base. Um, it, it wouldn't, it, it should probably require, uh, somebody taking notice of it. I have talked to, um, I have talked before about, uh, about this with our water board, and it's not pretty and it's not safe either way. And so we may want to, um, put this assignment on somebody's radar and take a look at it. Um, it's out by Amaretto, um, Mr. Berger did have permits, um, after the ninety seven flood and has gotten permits in the past to use as a dumping ground, I don't know if that's the best term. But lots of steel, metal, junk, garbage, whatever the case may be, does go into some of this water. And it does create some kind of foul hazard. Um, Berger Enterprises is located, um, right off of the base. I don't know if that's where the dump area is that he uses. He's used a couple of different areas I'm aware of, uh, but that may take, and I could talk with Nick West about it too.
I actually, Lane, like.
Lane, oh, yeah, I'll talk, I'll do it.
Because Lane was the one that was involved before.
Yeah, I'll visit with Lane about it and I'll meet with him one day and, and take a look at it. It's, it's not a good situation and then I know, uh, Mr. Berger has, uh, had comments and, and concerns about neighbors that live in the area. And so I'll take a look at it and see what, what the issue is.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm meeting with the base deputy civilian here tomorrow, like, bring it up.
Yeah, please do, because it's not, it's not a good situation all the way around and they are a neighbor.
Because while you're there, why don't you ask them about P F O S, too? I will do that.
Good idea, about what?
P F O S, if you've done any P F O S.
Okay, and we have no other correspondence, so adjournment, assuming a roll call vote, are we needed?
Most.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, meeting is adjourned. You all very much to your attention.